In commissioning a meeting to order, Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. We have an agenda. If any of you gentlemen would like to take those items.
Motion to receive and file, Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following appointments. Ronald Nielsen and Scott McDonald to the Memorial Hall Commission Boards, both within expiration date of 3/31/2018.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on those two appointments. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, sir.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Those gentlemen are approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Let's call a Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Kirk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Wilford?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign that motion. We have one request today that was tabled from last week by Mr. Jones. Did you have a chance to get your questions answered?
I did, and this will be a good way to move the city, or continue to move the city forward after all the good work that Matt has done with the resources of the schools. We still hope that with this new position, we'll still have a collaborative relationship with the schools and continue the good work and leveraging things as we move forward.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the request for the recruitment process for the Information Technology Director.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this request. Is there any discussion on this?
I just, I guess want to have a little further discussion. I understand that this is just authorizing to start the process, but do we have--
The system making appointment.
It's to make an appointment.
This one's to do both.
Oh, okay. Do we have a definitive plan in mind as far as what this is going to end up being, this department? Because I guess I'd like to know that before I vote for this. I mean, do we know are we going to have this person and our current person and another person? Is that kind of what we've got in mind? Are we going to have this person, our current person, and then a continued collaboration with the schools, or is it defined?
The hope is that we will, once we have this person on board, that is the plan, that they will help us come up with based on what their expertise are. Then we can figure out what we need to outsource and what is needed, whether, you know, if they feel that there's a portion that we need to have in-house, then obviously we would bring another request back to you. But if we can utilize the one person we have in them and outsource the rest for cost savings to the city and still be efficient, then that's absolutely what we'll do. So our, kind of, our goal is to get this person in place to help us come up with that plan.
Yeah, Matt O'Brien, Director of Technology. I think that was well said. Susie, I would just add to that, that I think it's prudent to wait before setting anything in stone because, to be quite honest, the skill set that whatever candidate is chosen for this position is going to influence what can actually be done in-house versus what you're actually going to need to outsource as well. Certainly, the vast majority of this person's functions are going to be leadership-related, but they may have a particular skill set in the server arena, or the network arena, or, you know, various other technical functions that will allow the city to be able to perform some functions in-house. So I think it's prudent to get this person on staff and then have them weigh in on what the rest of the department or what the rest of the outsourcing pieces look like.
Okay. And what do we tentatively have in the budget for starting July 1st for this area?
Well, I, Michelle, we hired you financial officer, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that up with me. I tentatively have enough for three positions plus a little outsourcing, or fewer positions and more outsourcing.
Is that, is that, that's a significant amount from this year, or not much?
Not significant. I think I maybe added $36,000. So, not what it could be, not that $36,000 isn't chump change, but it's not--
10% or something?
I'm not sure. We've got the phones in there, too, so probably not even that high, though. I don't know for sure.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We have a motion, a second. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed, and also the minutes of February 2nd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to take those travel requests.
Thank you.
First, we have Brian Foster, and that's for the Shade Tree Course and Trade Show in Ames, Iowa. Cost not to exceed $260. That's February 24th through 26th. Next, we have Eric Thorson, City Engineer for the American Public Works Association Spring Conference in West Des Moines, March 25th through 27th. Cost not to exceed $485. And we have Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer for the Land Surveyors Conference in Ames. Not to exceed $355.63, and that's March 5th and 6th. And then we have, oh, and that's it.
Pre-oths.
I'm sorry, yes. I'll save this for-- Take a motion to approve those three travel requests.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those items passed.
Madam Chairperson, pre-oths?
Yes, sir.
We have building maintenance, the amount of $7,395.14 for water damage cleanup at the Waterloo Public Library. And then building maintenance, $2,618 for replacement of wireless microphone for Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center Central Garage. $3,034.51 for I/O control for truck 903. Human rights, $1,000 for services for Jeffrey Schott from Institute of Public Affairs. Leisure services, $2,192 plus $150, shipping and handling for interlocking rubber flooring for the free weight area at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex. Police, $4,479.33 for replacement of desks and chairs and interview rooms and watch commander's office. Sewer, $4,458 plus $65.80 shipping and handling for replacement valves for digester heat exchanger number two and sludge storage tank. Sewer, $2,069 plus $400 shipping and handling for replacement gas lines, moisture drip tank for lagoon number two, gas drip pit. Very appetizing. Street, $7,400 plus $400 shipping and handling for augers, cutting, edgers, and wear plates for snow go, snow blower.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Is there discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. I will take the Budget Line Item Amendment. I move that we approve item number five. Copies are on file in Ms. Share's office. And also that we pay the bills this week, which are $3,290,902.97, 3,290,902.97.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time. We're adjourned.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting in Waterloo City Council this Monday, February 9th. Madam Clerk, if you'd read the roll, please.
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Wilford?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment, a sign of reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our meeting tonight was going to be led by Abraham Punches, and Abraham's not here, so if you would all join me, please, in the Pledge of Leadness to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May you see.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment comes on item number seven, and that's to correct the amount provided in error on Resolutions Number Seven, and that number will reflect $769,390.87. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of February 24th, February 2nd regular session.
Second.
I also leave any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. I have one recognition tonight, and I don't see Darrell here, but in case you're watching, Darrell. Darrell Hartama is the February Team Member of the Month, and I wish he was here, because if you guys haven't ever had the chance to meet Darrell, Darrell is a mechanic in our Public Works Department, but Darrell is a little bit unique. He's the guy that works on our fire trucks. So if you ever see our fire trucks going down the road, those big tires and those big engines and all of that stuff, Darrell has been with us for quite a while, and he's quite a fellow. And he just basically works on fire trucks. So Darrell, I hope you are watching. You do a great job, and it's a much deserved recognition for you to be the February Team Member of the Month, so congratulations to Darrell. Now, we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the Consent Agenda, items 1A through B3, B6. Also, with the approval of the Consent Agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which we read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $3,290,902.97, 3,290,902.97.
Second.
I also leave any questions or comments regarding the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call, vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a pretty short agenda tonight. It's just made up of resolutions, and somebody could take two, three, and four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is adopting a resolution approving notice of discontinuation from the NPDES coverage under General Permit Number Two to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014, Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract Number 816.
Just a minute, if you could stop for just a minute. I'm sorry to interrupt. I forgot to recognize somebody from the Consent Agenda, and I think Mr. Lambrecht is here. Justin, are you here? Why don't you stand up? My mistake. I'm looking through this thing on my electronic computer thingy here, and I'm not used to that yet. Justin Lambrecht is here, and he is a new member, a new employee for the City of Waterloo, and is going to be working in our forestry department, helping us cut down ash trees and all of that other stuff. So, Justin, thank you for coming on board, and my apologies for passing over. I didn't pass over you. I just missed you that first time, but I did want to make sure that I recognize you. That's a, that's an important position, and I appreciate what you guys do down there. So, welcome aboard, and thank you for saying yes to the City of Waterloo. We appreciate it. Sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
Well, that's fine.
I just looked up and noticed that. So, if you'd take number, start again with number three, and go ahead.
Good catch on that. Okay. Number two, adopting a resolution approving notice of discontinuation from NPDES coverage under contract permit number two to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014, Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract Number 816, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item three is adopting a resolution approving award of contract to Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $514,955.64 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2015 Geraldine Road Phase Three, Contract Number 871. And number four is a motion approving change order number three for a net increase of $7,274.17 for the Laporte Road Pumping Station and Forest Main, Contract Number 847.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding two, three, and four? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, vote please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Could we do the next three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt, we approve change order number three for a net increase of $75,950.99 for the FY 2014 West Airline Highway Rehab Contract Number 827, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. I move we adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Iowa Erosion Control, Inc. of Victor, Iowa, at a total cost of $1,188,925.98 for the FY 2014 West Airline Highway Rehabilitation Contract Number 827. Seven is a resolution. I move we adopt it approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, in the amount of $679,390.87 for the sanitary sewer improvement service areas number 15 and 16, Phase One, Contract Number 866, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond.
Second. It's the wrong finger. I'm sorry. Yeah, that was, that was the-- That was the amended one.
Oh.
On number seven.
On number seven, I correct myself, the amount of work was, is $769,390.87.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on any of those three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. The last three, please, eight, nine, and ten.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to adopt a resolution, authorize the police department to apply for a Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau grant for the period October 1st, 2015, to September 30th, 2016. Number nine is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to certify against certain parcels, unpaid snow removal, weed mowing, and lot cleanups. And 10 is a resolution approving request by Otto and Kim Macklin of NCP Associates LLC who canceled development agreement and rescind resolution number 2014-919 for the sale of 506 Reed Street. All obligations contained in the bid packet will be canceled, except the $1,000 escrow fee paid by Otto and Kim Macklin to be retained by the city.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel. And Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding any of those three?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on number 10. The, I was looking through some of the documents, and I was wondering, how long does it take for us to convey a property to someone that's purchased it? Because I was looking at the, the RFP was 12 of 2013. The earnest fee was received March of 2014. The development agreement went to October 2014, and then there was another something signed on 11/14. So I'm wondering, from the point that someone actually purchased the property, how long does it actually take for us to convey it to them and transfer it over to the individual?
Eric?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. I'll take an initial stab at that question. This one was a little bit more unique than other ones. We first went out to bid on this property and received no bids.
Okay.
And it was going to be heading towards demolition, and then the Macklins expressed an interest, so we did another bid and only received the one bid. Right at about that time, he was heading out of the area for like a one or two-month time period, so that kind of slowed it down as well. But in a typical process, kind of, once we have a bid out and then an accepted bid received, normally, I would say somewhere in the 60 to 90 day range is when we would, you know, normally have a closing.
Yeah, I was kind of looking and wondering, but thank you, Eric.
There were several pickups along the way on this one. Further questions about eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel. And ladies and gentlemen, as I said to start, this was a very, very short agenda meeting tonight. That's all of our regularly scheduled business. We do have one person. Bob, welcome. Bob Manning has called in and asked to give us a presentation on the Cedar Trails Partnership, so Bob, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Bob Manning, President of the Cedar Trails Partnership. We're pleased to be here tonight, just to remind the council and the staff people of the, of the great job we think that you're doing. We have 106 miles of hard-surface trails in Blackhawk County, and we're very proud of that. We have many uses of that, many people using it. In our Cedar Trails Partnership, we're made up of a, of a group of people that contribute $25 in dues and donations as they want to. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, so they can, can deduct donations at the end of the year. Between our dues and our donations, we raise $20,000 at the crack of $25 and $50 apiece. That covers a lot of people, so there's a lot of people that are very, very pleased with our trail system. We're advocates. Our, our full purpose is just to advocate for the trails and to say thank you to the city for the things that you've done to help maintain them. We want to continue the relationship and the partnership we have had in the past. We intend to have a annual Condition of the Trails meeting that will be inviting Paul Hudding and other similar parks and leisure people to a meeting in March to tell us, to remind us, so we can communicate to our members what's been done to improve the trails in the past, what the plans are for the future, and most importantly, what we can do to, to help coordinate those things. We also have our annual grants program that, over the last couple of years, we've provided funds to the City of Waterloo for some snow ski grooming equipment. Mother Nature doesn't always work well with us on that, but, but when we have the good snow, there's snow grooming equipment that we provided the funding for, and we're, we're excited to do that. We want to make sure that we're telling the electorate, and our members specifically, the things on how the city is working with us. Sometimes we've got to toot our own horn, and we want to toot your horn, to tell them what, what we're doing to maintain our trail system. And that's the purpose of our annual Condition of the Trails meeting, as we're calling it in March, both where we've been, where we want to go to, and what's on the wish list of these people. We'll have city, county, and estate parks representative and intercoG available at that meeting, and we just think it's important to, to bring those people together occasionally and to make sure we can get the information out to our members of what's happening with the Cedar Trails Partnership and to say thank you as we go along.
Bob, thank you very much. You know, we, you're right, we do have to toot our own horn occasionally, and we have to do that as a city. And certainly, our trails are, is something that we take great pride in. We have a tremendous trail system, and Cedar Trails Partnership is, a lot of that is due in large part to what you guys do. So thank you for what you do. We appreciate you coming and filling us in and giving us an update, but we also very much appreciate what you guys do and the good work that you do to keep those trails in good shape. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You bet. Is there anyone else that would like to address Mayor or Counsel?
Motion to--
I'm a little older and a little sore, and I used to force dill to 17, 25, 100. Like I told you last week, I think we need to work smarter. I think I may have found a couple little ways. One of them is a pudding drain deal going around. I received the notices on properties I own. I own one that doesn't have a basement. I received a notice on that, so I called down and said, what do we do about this? Can't you just write this one off? And, no, no, can't do that. Got to send somebody out to put a sticker on the electric box. Everybody knows it doesn't have a basement. Folks across the street, you can call over there, and they'll tell you it doesn't have-- a basement. So, we waste the postage, and we waste the inspector's time, and those folks are busy.